Good evening and welcome to the Marion Common Council Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, September 16th. We are in the Marion City Hall and it is 7:00 PM. So we're going to call the meeting to order and begin with prayer by Councilman David Kane.
Dear heavenly Father, we pray first before anything else. That's the most important part. Seeking your wisdom and guidance in these troubled times, we look for your help in all this. We ask that you bless the council with clarity and clarity of mind and compassion for our fellow citizens, that this administration also, that the seeds planted in this administration bears fruit. We ask that you protect over our city and its people. I also want to ask that we remember Bill Henry and bless his family, be with them as they grieve, and also pray for our own Debbie Goodman for healing and continued blessing on her life. We ask all of these things in your precious name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, and a pledge by Councilwoman Erica Devine.
Join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Councilman Kane and Councilwoman Devine. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Here.
Marshall?
Fordice?
Here.
Brunner?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Cowgill?
Here.
McKinley?
Here. Okay, we're going to move into tonight's Community Spotlight. And let me get these things pulled up here. And tonight, we are going to feature, yes, that's you. We're going to feature Jimmy from King Gero's. Come on up, Jimmy. I warned him ahead of time, he's going to have to come up front. Come on up. You know, Jimmy is not one for the spotlight, but this is called the Community Spotlight, so this is your turn to shine. Come on up, you can just stand right next to me. So many of you in this room probably know who this is, but if you don't know, it's Jimmy. I don't even want to try and pronounce your last name, because I'll probably mess it up. Jimmy the Greek, there we go. Jimmy is the owner, founder of King Gero's, and really just wanted to celebrate you. I've been trying to get Jimmy in here for a couple of months and just busy, a lot of things going on, but it's perfect timing, because he's recently celebrated 35 years with King Gero's or as the owner of King Gero's. And most people may not know this, but it's a locally owned business. It's not some corporate owned franchise, but I just wanted to share some words real quick. So for more than three decades, Jimmy has been more than a business owner in Marion. He's been a community builder as the owner of King Gero's for 35 years. Jimmy has created a local landmark that represents more than just great food. His restaurant has become a gathering place for families, friends, and neighbors, and a spot where memories are made over plates of Gero's, fries, just all sorts of hometown hospitality. Jimmy's impact goes far beyond the walls of his restaurant. He is consistently supported, just community stuff, community events, and then never hesitated to give back to those who support his business. So whether it's through sponsorships or just kind words, or just offering people jobs that maybe normally wouldn't be able to get a job, Jimmy's demonstrated what it means to be both a successful business owner, a good neighbor, and a good boss. What makes Jimmy truly stand out is his consistency and his dedication. And in age, well, there's a lot of small businesses, or we'll say small restaurants, that struggle to stay open. How many times do we see a business open and then a couple of years later, they just, they don't get the support and they can't stay open? King Gero's has remained a steady presence for 35 years and counting. So, and thanks to Jimmy's commitment to really quality food, personal service, keeping the prices good, the portions high, but really, it's just the environment that you provide, and the environment you provide for your employees. I know a little bit about your business through some friends and people that have worked there, and Jimmy is just so generous to his employees and letting people come back and work for him, and meeting people where they're at in their life, and giving them an opportunity to work and provide for their families, even maybe when other people wouldn't. And that says a lot about your character. Jimmy's friendly personality and hard work have earned him the respect and gratitude of the community. His restaurant is not just a place to eat, it's a part of Marion's story, it's woven into daily lives, daily lunch breaks, and those who call this city home. And so through his food and generosity and presence, Jimmy has shown that local businesses can do more than just serve customers, they can truly strengthen the fabric of a community. And this community is so desperately needed and wanted that, and you've provided a lot of that. So after 35 years of dedication, Jimmy's legacy is clear that King Gero's is more than just a restaurant. It's really just a symbol of what happens when the passion for people and pride in service really unite and come together. And so we just want to say thank you for 35 years of just providing a good meal, because as we know, a lot of, you know, a lot of love and conversations happen over food, right? That's where a lot of us meet and get to know each other, and you've provided that for 35 years in this community, and chose to stay in this community for 35 years. You've probably seen a lot of changes in this community, up and down, all around, and you've been a constant presence. So congratulations on 35 years. This picture that is on here, it's just, it's amazing that that's just his personality, like, here you go. I'm open for business, I got great food, come on in, and I'll take good care of you.
My daughter's wedding.
Yeah, I heard, that's kind of who I, might have got that picture from too, is maybe some family members, so.
Wedding day.
Yeah, so Jimmy, is there anything you'd want to say?
Well, I want to thank the community itself. I'm thankful that the community thanking me, but without the community, I couldn't do nothing, you know? The community has been very, very good to me, very supportive, and I'm very, very grateful and thankful, you know? He was talking about employees, you know, might provide them jobs, this and that, but those youngsters, you know, the young girls, the boys, without them would be nowhere. You know, for a lot of them, with their first job, but the same rules, the same principles all through life. Got to show up to work on time, you got to look good, you got to do a good job, you got to get along with your coworkers, so I got a little.
It's okay.
The same, the same principles. I'm thankful to a lot of good customers like Dave over there. Go back many, many years, plus others.
Yeah. Well, we thank you so much. Any other council members want to share any words? Oh, go ahead.
I want to thank the mayor for fixing, I didn't know who it was, my daughter disappointed we were, the mayor, congratulations, fixing my street. I've been waiting for that street to be fixed for years. I thank you very, very much.
He said 25 years it took, and finally.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you so much. Any council members want to say anything? Go ahead, Councilman Calgill.
Yeah, I've known Jimmy for a long time too, way back to the fire department, and he was always good to the firefighters, but it wasn't just, I mean, he's good to everybody. I've seen this man, the kindness of his heart, the things that he's done, and it's amazing. And 35 years, so I've been going there since I was five, obviously, so. What the heck was that all about? Anyway, but thank you, Jimmy, for everything, and I love you, buddy, and you're a great, great business owner in this town.
I love you too. Thank you very much.
There's no way you can sum up 35 years in a couple of minutes at a meeting, but, you know, people might be watching at home or see a video of this and go, oh, that's the guy behind King Gero's, we love that place. And no matter what you get to eat there, it's phenomenal and it's big portions. I've never had any there where I thought, I'm not sure about this. No, everything I eat there is to die for. And not only that, but he does catering. I mean, he's done catering for a long time. He not just operates the business inside the walls, but he does a lot of catering outside the walls, probably done many weddings and corporate events, special events.
Quite a few, for the city too.
Yeah, for the city as well, so.
Fire department, the city itself, police department, sheriff's department.
Probably everybody in 35 years, I imagine.
Yes, there's no place in Marion we haven't been.
Yeah. That's probably why you're still here.
Thank you.
People want you, and they want you to come back, and so it's not just your food, but it's just how you treat people, and we can't say enough about how much we appreciate that, so.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, any other council members want to say anything?
Well, sure, I would be remiss if I didn't share my points. Spent a lot of years knowing Jimmy, and we go way, way back, and knowing his family, and the kids probably don't remember this, but took them on my boat out on the reservoir and had a great time with them, and many a time, we've solved the city problems discussing it over a plate full of ribs, late at night, and spent a lot of hours there discussing, discussing life, discussing city business, and just, you're a great friend, and appreciate it, and many more years of success, Jimmy.
All right, any other council members want to share any words? Councilmember Brunner?
Jimmy, whether it's noon or 7 o'clock in the evening, our radio station used to be right north of you, and when I would come by your restaurant on evenings, it was always standing room only. So I say congratulations for 35 great years and continued great service to our community. Thank you so much.
35 cents coffee through the month of September.
Oh, there you go. Way to plug the business, I like that. Man, that's why he's successful, always plugging it, yeah.
Keep the number 35 alive.
That's good. Well, then, so next year, it's only 36 cents for a cup of coffee, right? Okay. Well, there's, I don't know of many other hardworking men. Jimmy, you're much appreciated. Don't forget to take time for yourself, though, I know you're a hard worker. I don't know if you know what that means to not work, but it's okay at some point if you want to slow down a little bit. We give you permission, so.
Thank you.
Any other council members? All right, thank you so much, Jimmy. Everyone give Jimmy a hand.
Absolutely, let's get a picture too, come on now.
Hold on, I'm okay with that.
No, we got to get a picture, yep. Family, come on up.
You guys stand right here. You're good. I'll slip on you. There you go. Okay, here we go. All right, ready? One, two, three. Good?
All right. Thank you so much, Jimmy. Appreciate you.
David, thank you.
Okay, moving on to city employee spotlight. We have Rose tonight for the city employee spotlight. Rose, Cadena, where are you? Rose, come all the way up, you've been through enough of these, you know the drill. I'll let her get up here. So this was an easy, easy city employee spotlight. They're all easy, but Rose has been through a lot of meetings, always involved with something somewhere for the city, the entertainment and the parks of the city, but Rose, first of all, how long have you been with the city?
18 years.
18 years, I knew it was close to 20. But Rose has done a wonderful job. So you're kind of, you're the parks office manager currently, and then with this little bit of reorg, you're shifting into a different role next year or a different title?
Park director.
Park director, which, to be honest, we've pretty much kind of been the park director mostly, but she's assuming a new role next year as parks director. But Rose has done a phenomenal job, so she has an amazing team behind her, but if you see any events going on at the parks, the cleaning of the parks, she has worked hand in hand with city maintenance, with her team, and just putting a wonderful environment together for our parks. I mean, everyone knows about Mater Park, but we have a lot of other parks that she oversees as well, but just Mater Park alone is just a shining part of the city, and Rose plays a vital part in that. Any of these holidays that we have down there, whether it's the upcoming, like, fall festival, any of those types of festivals we have, Rose is right there, right behind it, and there is a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of coordination that takes a lot of phone calls and a lot of patience, and Rose has done a phenomenal job with that. Her leadership continues to positively impact Marion's quality of life, because our parks, entertainment, all of that improves our quality of life. So Rose, we just really, really appreciate your 18 years of service, could say a lot, lot more, but I wanted to open it up for any other council members or for you, if you'd like to share anything.
I would just like to say thank you, mostly to my husband, who through 18 years has supported me and probably been at just as many events as I have been, and all the hours that I take away from our family, even in the evening time. Sometimes it's not easy, but we get through it. And I just thank everybody for support throughout the years, throughout different administrations. I still very much enjoy my job, and I very much look forward to moving into my new position.
Well, we're excited for you. Some people may not realize, but she has a parks board as well that she has to kind of report to or work with, let alone the council, the mayor. Walkway of Lights, which has its own board, so there's a lot of different entities that requires patience, consistency, and working well with others. So Rose, there's a reason you're still here, 18 years strong, and we think you've done a phenomenal job in what you do, and looking forward to see you transition into that new role next year, and really taking our parks and mix with your vision, the mayor's vision, the rest of the council's vision, and just really upping the game for the quality of life for the city. You know, projects that are currently in the mix, skate park and all that, Rose, I can speak for myself that she's been supportive of it and helpful, and I can't thank you enough for that, and just anything I need, any resources or getting on the parks agenda, anything like that, Rose has been very, very helpful and open to facilitating things. So, any other council members want to share anything about Rose? Yep, Councilmember Brunner?
I have the honor of serving on the park board, and Rose is just outstanding to work with. She even went out and tried to play some pickleball, and I was amazed that she is walking as well as she is. We were glad to have her on the radio station the other day, and she just does a wonderful job. So thank you, Rose, for what you do for the park board.
Thank you so much, Councilman Brunner, appreciate that. All right, go ahead, Councilman Calgill.
Yeah, I just, you know, Rose is a delight. I mean, I, we're up here at City Hall all the time, and she has always just got that smile on her face, and anything we've ever asked, she just doesn't know the word no. Well, she probably does her husband, I'm sure, but to everybody else, she doesn't. And she's just, I mean, just a constant hard worker, and if something needs done, she'll find a way to get it done.
And to add to that, I do know, like, she will give up vacations, time, PTO, whatever you call it, accrued time, just to make sure events are happening. A lot of, I mean, so she's got to be in the office during the day, but then a lot of the office happen, or events happen on the evening and the weekends, and so there's a lot of sacrifice there, and it doesn't go unnoticed, and I just want the residents and the people that use our parks to understand how good we have it with Rose and her entire team. You just, I know you guys all just really bond well and work well, and that's half the battle there, but that speaks to you as well, somebody that your team can work together with and work as a team, so we appreciate it. All right, let's give Rose a hand. And a photo. Thank you for coming up, yeah, for joining. Come on in. Yeah. There you go.
I look a lot better.
Good luck. Ready? One, two, three.
All right. Take your rest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Thank you very much. I got three squeeze.
All right, well, the fun stuff's over. Okay, moving into, oh, by the way, for Jimmy and Rose, you know, you guys are welcome to stay, but you don't have to, but you know, you might have to, because he has a bad time at some point, so glad you guys could all make it, Jimmy and his family. All right, moving into the consent agenda for the approval of minutes of regular meeting, September 2nd, 2025, consideration of pre-approved claims and consideration of claims, any discussion on that? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second? Motion by Councilman Calgill, a second by Councilman Brunner, any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Cowgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. And moving into committee reports, do we have any committee reports tonight? Go ahead, Councilman Klein.
The Board of Aviation Commissioners met September 4th, and record-setting news from them, they had a record set for breakfast served at the Fly-in Cruise Inn this year. They had about 3,700, and there were about 150, 160 airplanes that participated. They didn't get a exact count on the cars, and they also, construction plans and the specifications for a partial parallel taxiway toward runway 33, they approved that, and final request for reimbursement should come in Sept-, oh, no, 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 I read that wrong. I apologize, I'm reading from my notes. The progress on the construction plans are going to be ready for bidding in the spring. And then, number three, the board approved payment for the design work of the fuel farm, which the, we helped, we contributed to, and to execute the construction contracts for that, for both the jet fuel and the low lead projects, and the total for everything that was approved was $1,420,150. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Klein.
Question, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Was there any comments, or has the county or gas city stepped up to the plate yet and made a commitment towards the airport at this point in time?
No.
Okay, thank you.
There, I will say, there has been talk, but the bottom line is, nothing has come of it, and it doesn't look promising.
All right, Councilwoman Devine?
The Board of Works met yesterday. They approved the equipment purchase for the building department, which is the new vehicle with the chipper attachment to it, chipper bed, whatever that's called. And then there were two properties that the city owned that were sold to the adjoining property owners, one at 1014 South Branson and one at 1620 West Second Street. And then they had a gentleman, a citizen, come up and talk with them about the process that they're working on for demolition of houses and to get some status updates, so that was their meeting.
Thank you so much. Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move into unfinished business, general ordinance 18, 2025, City of Marion redevelopment authority, second reading and public hearing.
An ordinance of the common council of the city of Marion, Indiana, establishing the city of Marion redevelopment authority. Indiana Code, Section 36.7, 14.5, authorizes the city council of the city of Marion, Indiana, to create a redevelopment authority in order to pursue the public purposes of the redevelopment authority act, including, without limitation, financing local public improvements for lease to the city of Marion Redevelopment Commission and to issue bonds payable from lease rentals. Speaking Mayor Ronald Morell.
Good evening, council. I'm filling in for Barnes and Thunberg tonight. They all have somewhere else to be, so I'm going to be pinch hitting on that, but I'm prepared. So if you have any questions for me regarding the redevelopment authority, I would like to have those at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So if there's any questions from council members, we'll do that, and then go to the public, public hearing. Councilman Klein?
Well, since you're pinch hitting for barn, for the lawyer guys, would, and it's a public hearing, would you go over what this is, what it would do, and why you think it should be done, just for folks here who may not quite have a grasp?
Sure. In the simplest form, the redevelopment authority is the little brother of the redevelopment commission, and what this allows for us to do is perform projects for, perform projects with revenue that we have that is outside our constitutional debt limit. So our constitutional debt limit is set at 2%, so for example, Marion's is about 6 million and some change, and once we build a fire station, that's completely gone. So once we, now we have additional revenues, and for example, the food and beverage tax specifically, if we want to do more projects, we do not, under state law, we don't have the ability to spend those, or borrow against those funds. So setting up the redevelopment authority allows for us to be able to borrow against those funds, to be able to perform some of the additional projects that we pass the food and beverage tax for. So currently, what we're, what was being proposed tonight is not an action to use any funds or anything, this is just giving us an additional tool in our tool bag in the future, in the future, in case we do want to use it for something.
Any other council members with a question before we go to public hearing? All right, at this time, we'll open up for the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, you can make your way to the microphone at this time. I'm not seeing anyone make it, last chance. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any other council members with questions? Vice President Fordice?
So the only thing that I have a problem with on this is, is it says that in order to pursue the public process of the act, including, without limitation, financing local public improvements for lease to the city and Marion Redevelopment Commission. I guess I didn't realize that you were going to use the food and beverage tax for the redevelopment commission.
The redevelop, so the food and be-
I thought the redevelopment commission worked off TIF.
Sure, so the redevelopment commission can use TIF funds, so what we're, the food and beverage tax revenue in and of itself can, is not, can't perform the projects that we passed it for. So for example, Ballard Field, that we're looking to do the sports remodeling for, in order to use that revenue, we have to be able to use, have a procurement method to borrow against that money. In order for us to do that, we had to set up this redevelopment authority, which then flows through, obviously, the redevelopment commission as well as the redevelop, I mean, as the city council. So the creation of the redevelopment authority isn't a guarantee that we're going to do for anything like that, the same, isn't a guarantee of anything, so we still have to do additional processes to be able to use those funds, but the food and beverage tax in and of itself is just, is just revenue unless we have a procurement method, so which we can use it to borrow against.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so you've hit your limit on your major capacity to bond, through the estimated amount of TIF funds that we're going to get through the redevelopment commission, to be able to bond projects or spend money.
Yes, so the redevelopment commission has the ability by law to spend up to $5 million without coming to the city council. So our, us doing the fire station was the maximum of our redevelopment commission borrowing capacity under state law. So in order to borrow any additional funds, even though we have the revenue to support it, you have to create what this is, a redevelopment authority.
How much, how much TIF additional funds are going to be available? How much, how much, uh, TIF additional funds are going to be available?
Um, I don't have all those, all those funds right in front of me, but they, they, they break down over, over the next, um, 30 or so years, and the, um, I can forward those to you, that Bank of Chile's done a great job on that, but it's, um, it's, it's fairly healthy. And I would say, in excess of all the projects that we've already done, um, we still are, are netting north of $2 million a year to be able to use for projects. But I, I don't want to, don't quote me on that exact number, because it's, it's give or take a few hundred thousand either way, but I'll send you that full breakdown of our, um, yearly available revenues through TIF.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council members? Councilman Klein.
I admittedly have, maybe some would say, a simplistic view of this. If, but it, to me, it's akin to if we in our house have hit our, have maxed out our credit cards, it's kind of, to me, the same idea of we're going to create a straw man so we can borrow more money. And I just, I think we should be better, and I know you had, that this would go for great and wonderful things. I hate debt, and, um, I just can't see that this is something we should be doing, and I thank you.
Any other council members?
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I am in favor of this. This, this does create another tool in our tool bag that we can pull the trigger on if needed. The history of the 2%, Mayor, if you would remind me of how that took place, I know they explained that to us last meeting, explain that once again to us, if you remember that, that scenario, that it was, the limit was 2%.
I'll take, I'll take aside that the lawyers are way more educated on me than that, but it was in the 1800s that Indiana set this, um, uh, this, uh, this debt limit. I think it was in, in response to the, everyone was building the, um, the canals. They were building the canals, and obviously Indiana went pretty crazy with it, and it didn't work. So we, um, they set this debt, they, uh, this debt limit, uh, over 100 years ago. And then the state legislator realized that, legislature realized this was something that needed to be dealt with without going in and actually changing the whole entire constitution, which if you've ever been a part of that, that's really cumbersome. They just added in, uh, this, this, uh, this amendment, if you will, to be able to allow for cities to be able to exercise, um, additional debt through the redevelopment authority.
Thank you for refreshing my memory on that. So in, in reality, this is an antiquated law that, um, limits us to 2% of our revenue. And most cities our size have this tool in their tool bag at this point. Am I not right?
Yeah, we would be one of the, the lawyers had the exact cities on this, but we were one of the, we would be one of the last cities in the state of Indiana to implement it.
Thank you. I will add, this, the creation of this isn't automatically just increasing debt. It's just a tool, um, to allow us, but projects still have to get approved, have to go through the council, the redevelopment commission, whatever entity responsible. So there's still oversight, this is just, um, so projects still get evaluated on their own merit. This just allows us to actually look at the project and not be our hands tied and going, well, we, uh, we're all, we're all project out, we don't have any capacity. Uh, and there's a reason that this was created a long time ago, um, because of that constitutional limit and what I've been told, and maybe he said at the last meeting too, is that this was an easier thing for the state to pass than to try and redo the constitution essentially. Times have changed, you know, that was over 100 years ago, and, um, you know, this is a very, very common tool to improve, um, public facilities, infrastructure, and I think this is the path forward for Marion. I think it's a good option to have. We don't want to have our hands tied on, um, we don't want to slow the growth that, that we're already experiencing. We want all the tools at our disposal and not have our hands tied. Any other council members? Uh, Vice President Fordice.
And I agree with, uh, with everything that all the council people are saying, and I, I do relish the fact that it's an additional tool. My only contention is, is in the ordinance, it says, "without limitation." And I understand the Constitution, uh, states in there the 2%, which we're capped at 5 million. That's the only thing that's really bothering me in this ordinance, it says, "without limitation." So to me, if I'm reading that correct, that means that you could just go until you're out of money. So, I mean, that's the only thing that's holding me back on this, is I understand the logistics of it, but in the ordinance, it was stating "without limitation," so there is no limitation on financing local public improvements for lease to the City of Marion Redevelopment. That's the only thing that's holding me back on this. I think that we should have a limitation with the amount of funds that we're going to have coming in and with the food and beverage tax. So I would feel more comfortable if there was a limitation on this, uh, if you, if you wanted to, you know, put something in there with the funds that we've got, that we know that are coming in, to be able to pay for these projects. But even with the food and beverage administration, that's, that's going to be a variable. We don't know what it's going to be year to year or anything like that. So that's the only issue that I have with this. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
If I'm, I may, I mean, I'm sure this is just a regurgitation of what's actually in the state, um, code for this, um, for, without limitation. But speaking on that, there are several layers of accountability and limitations. For one, all nine of you have to approve it. And then, second of all, when we go to the bond market, these banks aren't going to lend us money that we don't have the capacity to pay back. So just like when we just completed with the fire station, it was a very extensive, um, dare I say, invasive process to be able to get the money to build, to build that. So, um, even if, even if it said we can borrow $700 million, nobody's going to lend us that if we don't have the capacity to be able to pay that back. And there's a lot of different checks and balances, you all, the Redevelopment Commission, as well as the, the bankers in the bond market that analyze each and every time we make an ask for something.
Yeah, and just for clarity, I mean, this, this ordinance just allows us to create it, the governance and how the RDA operates is set by state statute, which is the 36.7, 14.5. So if the legislature changes it next year, then we have to follow that. This simply just lets us create it. And I think that's up for interpretation when you say "without limitation." I read it as, with, without limitation on the type of project, too. You know, whereas, say, the, um, food and beverage tax, we can only use it for certain types of projects. This RDA, I interpret that as, allows us to use it for whatever public infrastructure project we would like, and I don't, the debt limit and all that, that is definitely, as the mayor said, you know, that, the, the banks are going to tell us. And again, it comes back to, every project still has to go through, um, the proper governance, whether it's the Redevelopment Commission or the city council. And so at the end of the day, as the fiscal, um, body, it is going to come down to us whether we should approve a project and know our debt limits at that time as well. Uh, Councilman Kane, did you have anything?
I'll pass at this point.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Those questions and comments.
Okay. I just wanted to give some clarity on that. Any other councilman, Marty, go ahead.
Um, the "without limitation" language specifically just refers to the method. It is not trump any other parts of the Indiana Code. So it is simply is defining what is capable in terms of fulfilling the purposes of the Act. So the financing local public improvements that is after "without limitation" is just one example of the ways in which the redevelopment authority can be used. It is in no way reflect or alter the financial requirements otherwise, uh, in the Indiana Code.
All right, appreciate that clarity, thank you. Any other council members? Oh, go ahead.
Just one other thing, that, and I believe this, this was, uh, a point that was made at the, uh, State Board of Accounts' final reading, is that, um, once we create a Marion Redevelopment Authority, the State Board of Accounts doesn't have any authority over that. She brought that up during that meeting, if you remember.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear, too.
I don't recall that, but, um...
You can research that.
I'm sure there's...
It's, it's in the minutes. You can research that, but she did say that she didn't have authority over a redevelopment authority, but she has redevelopment authority over Redevelopment Commission. I'm sorry, you brought that point up, you thought you were your own board, and she said that you're still a Department of the City. Not a redevelopment authority is not a Department of the City, but the redevelopment authority is a Department of the City. Do you remember that discussion?
Uh, which meeting? I'm in a lot of meetings, I don't know which one you're talking about.
The final meeting, the State Board of Accounts reading.
I don't recall that.
Yeah.
I don't recall that conversation.
The Controller, remember it, she was...
Yeah, I, I don't recall that.
That's all, that's all right.
The authority is a...
That's all I had.
Appointed board, yeah, it's, there are appointments to that authority. But, you know, whether the authority or the commission holds on to a project or not, um, there is oversight on any money that comes in and out of the city, there's oversight. And whether it's through an RDA or the RDC, trust me, the government, the, the state has oversight over it. So I'm not sure in what context she said that, I don't recall that. But at the end of the day, we're the oversight, we're the council. So, um, if there's a project that comes across that's an RDA project and that has to come to the council, or it goes to the Redevelopment Commission, then those commissions or us as a council will, you know, we're, we're that process of screening those projects. So I, I wish I could remember what you're talking about, I just don't recall that part of that meeting. Any other council members? If I don't have any other comment, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, suspend the rules on General Ordinance 18, 2025.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules for General Ordinance 18, 2025 by Councilman Calgill, a second by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Fordice.
No.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes, rules have been suspended, entertain another motion.
Mr. President, I'd now like to make a motion that we pass General Ordinance 18, 2025.
Second. Motion to pass General Ordinance 18, 2025 by Councilman Calgill, a second by Councilman Kane. Any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane.
Aye.
Fordice.
No.
Brunner.
Aye.
Klein.
No.
Devine.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Calgill.
Aye.
McKinley.
Yes, General Ordinance 18, 2025 has passed. Moving on to Additional Appropriation 14-2025, 2026 Budget, second reading, public hearing.
We are pleased to share the 2026 budget for the City of Marion. This budget reflects our continued commitment to the city's mission and long-term goals. Our administration's top priority remains providing excellent community services and showing appreciation for our employees' hard work and dedication. We are pleased to present a balanced budget for 2026 and anticipate maintaining our cash reserve balance. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morell Jr.
Um, good evening again. This is obviously one of the heaviest things we do every year, so I really appreciate all of you for working through us, through our budget committee meetings, and as well as, um, the official council meetings on this. And thanks, thank you to all of our team, each department head, um, and specifically the Controller, especially the Controller's office who worked so hard to put this together. They, um, deserve all the credit for being able to have this amazing budget that's before you. One, I'll only highlight a couple of things. One, being that this budget is balanced, and two, we're maintaining our, um, our cash reserve, and that's very impressive for our team, for all the things that we've been able to accomplish and still be able to have, um, one of the highest cash reserves that the city has, Marion, have had in a long time. So kudos to them, and thank you all so much for working with us. And if you have any questions for me, I would like them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And before we go to questions and public, uh, reading, um, Judge Howell is here tonight. Um, he is part of the budget process, he wasn't able to make some of those meetings, and, uh, would just like him to be able to just introduce himself, so that way if council members have question regards to the budget pertaining to the city court, they know who he is and can answer those questions. So Judge Howell, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Hey, good, good evening. Uh, I'm, uh, Josh Howell, as the city court judge, was appointed by the governor here about a year and a half ago as, uh, your city court judge. My, my budget's not particularly interesting, uh, I don't believe it's changed at all, uh, from last year, uh, with, with what we did with it. And I have known all of you quite some, not all of you, most of you quite some time, and just wanted to make sure that I got here and, uh, had a chance to introduce myself. Also, um, you know, this is, I represent, I'm the judge of the Marion City Court, it's a, a city court, and, uh, one of the things that we've done, uh, right after I entered office was expanded the hours of the court. Uh, we had a serious backlog of cases, and we also carved out some special time for matters that the city handles, so that it's, uh, it's time that we set aside just for things the city does, so they're, uh, the, uh, city council and, uh, the, the staff that supports him is able to get in and then get back about their business, uh, as quick as we can. I wanted to extend an invitation to, to each of you and then to the public at large. City court proceedings, uh, are typically on Mondays and Thursdays at 1:30. We start earlier, uh, once every, in a great while, but the Thursday, first day at 1:30 is when we do trials, and then things are a little more interesting. To the degree you've got any interest at all, I'd be happy, uh, to have you come in and, and, and watch court in action, and then to the degree that anybody has any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer any of those that you would have. Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to address you here today and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Judge, appreciate that so much. Uh, anyone have any initial questions for Judge before we go to public hearing? All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can hang out for a minute.
Have a good evening.
Yeah. Anybody have, any council members have questions for the mayor before we go to public hearing? Vice President Fordice.
Mayor, I, you know, I sent you an email, were you able to get me that?
Yes, I...
Breakdown.
So I'm still working on that, what Councilman Fordice was referring to, he wanted the, um, the edit fund itemized, so I'm still, um, working on that to be able to send to you. Um, that, so it doesn't affect the, um, the amount being asked for, and he just asked for specifics on our miscellaneous contractual services, where it would be used.
All right. We'll go and move into the public hearing. So if you'd like to speak on the 2026 budget, please make your way to the microphone. Not seeing anyone move forward, so last chance. All right, we'll go and close the public hearing, and any other council members with questions for the mayor on this?
Does that include department heads or just the mayor?
It's up to the mayor, yeah.
Yeah, we can open it up, that's okay.
Okay.
Anything on the budget?
Yes. I have questions for Rose on the Parks Department, please. Hi, Rose. I'm just clarifying this for myself on the, uh, the new department that we established for the Parks Department, and, um, on the park labors, you came up with 164,000. I'm assuming that you're figuring a 40-hour work week for the amount of labors that you're having on that?
Yes.
And they're hourly?
They are.
So it's just based on 40 hours a week hourly?
Yes.
Okay. And you do have some in there for overtime for your events and stuff like that?
That's correct. They would work over 40, they would get time and a half.
Sure. And, um, now, since they're transferring to, some of them are coming from the street department, correct?
We hope so, yes.
Okay, so that's where we're going to see a little bit of savings, they're non-union, correct?
We would be non-union, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Rose while she's up here, or future Parks Director? Or any other questions related, related to the 2026 budget for the mayor or department heads? Oh, Vice President Fordice.
I have one for the Chief of Police. Chief Gilbert's here. The, the only question that I have, Chief, I see that you're anticipating your overtime going up by $80,000. And right now, by contract... And right now by contract, what are, what are we locked in at on the amount of officers? I know you've got fifty-nine right on staff now.
Fifty-nine.
Right. What are we locked in on contract to have?
The, the contract doesn't, uh, address.
It doesn't stipulate the amount?
Right, we decide the amount of manpower, but the number's fifty-nine.
Are, are you planning on staying at that or?
Well, Mayor.
Overtime, overtime, no, I understand. That's why I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
You know, it's either manpower or overtime, correct?
Well, I, I wouldn't, I don't, it might be a little bit oversimplifying. We're, we're committed to fifty-nine right now. We're gonna make do with that now. Uh, landscape changes or, uh, we put ourselves in a position to be able to finance more. That's something I'm always talking to the mayor about. You expect that I would do that, but, uh. We're at fifty-nine right now. That's what we're gonna conduct business at until the mayor says otherwise. And of course, with your involvement, but we're at fifty-nine now. But you've identified with a lesser number. The potential there is to use more overtime, which is what we've seen, which, which reflects the change you've seen in the budget line item.
So you've got less officers.
Yeah, you're gonna, if you, if you have fewer officers, you're gonna pay a little more overtime.
Than last year's budget, correct?
Significantly more, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Chief.
All right. Any other questions? Any other department heads? Last chance for council members? Okay. If I have no other questions, then. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would move that we suspend the rules. Can we? I think we can.
I don't know. I've heard conflicting, um. Information, but. Well, just hold on a second. Hold on. We'll, we'll get this figured out. I have a motion, so we'll. Have to. Defer it to council or. Or if we're not sure, then go the safe route to the third reading. So it's a, I'll defer this to Marty at the moment.
Oh, I can check, but my preference would be just to have the three readings.
Okay, I'll change my motion to move it to the third reading. Second.
A motion to. Um, pass additional appropriation fourteen twenty twenty-five to a third reading, a second by Councilman Brunner. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, excuse me, additional appropriation fourteen dash twenty twenty-five, we'll go to a third reading at the next meeting. I think for future, it'd be good to know that. Uh, I'm not sure if there's a specific IC code that restricts that. I don't remember seeing a. City, uh, ordinance or a city code that restricts that, but it would be good to know in the future. Um, but we'll just go ahead and go to third reading anyways. Uh, no worries. Okay, and moving into the next item, Grant County Public Safety Operations Communications Board. Um, just another reminder that we do have for the council an opening to appoint. Somebody to the Public Safety Operations Communication Board, or as we call it, the Dispatch Board. So there is a board that oversees the dispatch operations for the county and the Marion City Council gets one appointee, and this is ours. I have received several resumes. I forwarded them all to the council members as we get them. Uh, Madam Deputy Clerk, have anyone submitted one into the office yet?
No, not yet.
Okay, so they've all been just emailed and I forwarded those out. We've had several already. Uh, the opening is still available to submit resumes until September twenty-sixth at four P M. And they either need to be dropped off a resume at the city clerk's office or emailed to council president at cityofmarion.in.gov. And then the appointee will be selected at the first council meeting of October, so which is our next council meeting. Uh, and I will be asking those that applied or submitted the resumes to come to that meeting. For us to ask questions, just typical format we do. Um. So, and I do encourage council members to reach out to these applicants and ask questions and get to know them and. And, and understand why and what they want to do on that board. So just my encouragement. But that's just more of an announcement that that is still available to be applied for. Moving into new business, general ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-five. Salary ordinance and two hundred and fifty dollar flex dollars for appointed officers and employees first reading.
An ordinance fixing the maximum salary of appointed officers and employees. An annual payment of flex dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars to non-contractual full-time employees of the city of Marion, Indiana for the year of two, twenty twenty-six. We are pleased to share the two thousand twenty-six salary ordinance for the city of Marion. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morel.
Um, good evening again. So the next six, um, ordinances that you'll see are the salary ordinance. So this essentially just supports the. Um, the salary portion of the budget that was just moved to the third reading. So, um, this was separated out to be, to give clarity amongst each department, whether so is elected officials. Um, public safety, um, or normal, um, employees. And, oh, I'm sorry, police and fire, um, normal employees and, um, the public safety. And you also see one of the things to be considered as the, uh, the bonus. That's also reflected in the budget. So this essentially just supports the budget that was just moved to the third reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, these are just statutorily how we have to pass it. So it's, uh, pretty much all related to the budget. Um, any council members with questions for the mayor? One thing, uh, Marty, if we could find out too, is do these require three readings or not as well, just for future? Okay. If we don't have any questions for the mayor, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass general ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-five on to second reading, public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Calgill to pass general ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-five to a second reading. I heard, uh, Councilman Witten second that. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. General ordinance nineteen twenty twenty-five will move to a second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. Moving on to general ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-five, salary ordinance for elected officials first reading.
An ordinance fixing maximum salaries of elected officials for the city of Marion, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-six. We are pleased to share the two thousand twenty-six salary ordinance for the city of Marion elected officials. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morel.
Um, this did not change at all. No elected officials got any raises and elected officials aren't allowed legally to get the bonuses that everyone else is getting.
Thank you, Mayor. Any council members with questions? No other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll move we pass general ord, sal, uh, general ordinance twenty twenty-five, second reading, public hearing.
Second.
I've got a motion to pass general ordinance twenty twenty-five by Councilman Klein. I heard a second by coun, uh, Vice President Fordice. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. General ordinance twenty twenty-five will go to second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. Moving on to general ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five, public safety bonus for police officers and firefighters, first reading.
An ordinance fixing the one-time public safety bonus for police officers and firefighters for the city of Marion, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-six. To express our appreciation for dedication of our public safety employees who are part of the bargaining unit. Will also receive an additional one thousand dollar bonus. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morel.
Um, this is something that we negotiated in lieu of not being able to give, um, raises this year for our police and fire.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add. Been waiting for this topic to come up. That, um. My absolute hope, and I know the mayor shares this as well, is that, uh, if we can get through next year's, um. State legislature sessions and have a clearer picture of our, uh, future tax revenue for the city through two thousand twenty-eight. My absolute hope is that we can come back next year and give those set percentage raises. Um, and if possible, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself, to not only give them a raise next year if we're able to, but also adjust it. Um, with inflation based on this year as well. So I just want that to be on public record. That this bonus is not a way to get around raises. It's just we're asking to give us. Six months to twelve months to kind of see where the dust settles. And be able to, long-term, give the appropriate raises. And make our salaries for police and fire more and more competitive, along, in alignment with communities, uh, that surround us. So just wanted that to be on the record. Any other council members? Want to say anything or have questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass general ordinance twenty-two twenty twenty-five on to second reading, public hearing. Or twenty-one, I'm sorry, yep.
Second.
I've got a motion to pass general ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five by Councilman Calgill, a second by Councilman Kane. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine? Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. General ordinance twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five has passed and will move to a second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. Moving into general ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, employee appreciation bonus first reading.
An ordinance fixing the one-time employee appreciation bonus for the city of Marion, Indiana for the year of twenty twenty-six. To express our appreciation for the dedication of our employees. A one-time bonus of one thousand dollars will be provided to full-time employees and five hundred dollars to part-time employees. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morel.
Um, similar to the ordinance prior to this one, this is a, a one-time bonus for all city hall, um, employees. Um, to show our appreciation because we weren't allowed, able to give raises this year.
Any council members questions? Discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass general ordinance twenty-two twenty twenty-five on to second reading, public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Calgill to pass general ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five, a second by Councilman Brunner. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, general ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-five has passed. We'll move on to a second reading, public hearing. And general ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five, salary ordinance for police department, first reading.
An ordinance fixing the maximum salaries for police officers for the city of Marion, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-six. We are pleased to share the two thousand twenty-six salary ordinance for the city of Marion Police Department. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morel.
Um, this just supports the, the budget of the salaries for the police officers.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, questions, discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll enter, or, I'd like to make a motion that we pass general ordinance twenty-three twenty twenty-five on to second reading, public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Calgill to pass general ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five, second by Councilman Klein. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, general ordinance twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five will move on to a second reading, public hearing. General ordinance twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five, salary ordinance for Fire Department, first reading.
An ordinance fixing the maximum salaries for firefighters for the city of Marion, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-six. We are pleased to share the two thousand twenty-six salary ordinance for the city of Marion firefighters. Speaking, Mayor Ronald Morel.
Um, this supports the, the budget for the, uh, salaries for the Marion Fire Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions, discussion by council? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we pass general ordinance twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five to a second reading and public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Witten to pass general ordinance twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five, second by Councilman Klein. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Calgill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes. General ordinance twenty-four twenty twenty-five has passed, move to second reading, public hearing at the next council meeting. Moving into resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-five, written agreement for Smash and Dash Veters Grill and Thrill LLC.
A resolution approving a formal written commitment and use agreement by and between the city of Marion, Indiana. Marion, Grant County, Indiana, and Smash and Dash Veters Grill and Thrill LLC. Smash and Dash is a new family-owned restaurant entertainment space set to open their doors in the next few months. They've spent the last past year working with economic development staff to develop their concept for a family-friendly restaurant. Entertainment space and secure purchase of eight hundred East Third Street from Marion R D C. The owners of Smash and Dash will be investing seven hundred plus dollars in the renovation and restoration of the former go-kart facility. Once complete, this will be a unique, exciting addition to the downtown Riverfront District in Marion. In order to support their business, they are seeking approval for the Riverfront Liquor Permit. Speaking, Joe Murphy. Oh, Mayor Morel.
Um, this is very exciting. So, uh, obviously, you know, we all, we, we passed the, uh, the Riverfront, um, district last year. And we've seen success thus far through, um, Los Amores and, and Obies. So this will be one of the, um, a new addition for us, which is, it conquers, uh, multiple things at once. First of all, it's taking a blighted property and making it beautiful again. And it's, it's us, um, encouraging local businesses to invest in the city of Marion. It also is filling one of the gaps that we have in the city, uh, entertainment, and, and quite frankly, it's good food. So, um. What this, obviously, we've been through this process a few times. So I've, uh, okayed it in my end. We need you guys to pass a resolution. And from there, it goes to the state of Indiana and they do their thing and it comes back. So, um, but I don't want to take all the thunder because the owners of the, uh, the new establishment are here tonight. And I, I believe that they can share with you when the, um, the groundbreaking is as well, which is coming up here in the next month. So I'll ask them to come forth and share more about their vision and the business, uh, before we consider on the, the vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make some clarification. It was just probably a slip of the tongue, but it's seven hundred thousand plus dollars that are being invested, not seven hundred. Uh, we really appreciate you guys for being here tonight and you wanting to invest in, in Marion. So go ahead, introduce yourselves and tell us what we'd like to say.
Hi, I'm, I'm Rachel Lundeviter.
And I'm Erin Lundeviter. I don't know if I tell them. And, uh. So, so we're actually, um, I grew up around the area. I grew up in Fairmount area. I graduated from Madison Grant. And Rachel, she's grown up here in the cer, city of Marion her whole life, graduated from Marion as well. So, um. We just really seek the opportunity. It's kind of taken us a few months to kind of get to where we're at, but, uh, we're almost kind of there at the closing process. But, uh, just seeking the liquor license and kind of things like that to. Just to add some more to, uh, to what we're trying to do over here.
Because I'm sure everybody's familiar with the old go-kart track that has been waiting for someone to take over, right? And so we have provided our concept plan, of course, and we're, working through finalizing things. Um, we are. About two weeks away from ti, signing final paperwork, starting construction. Um, the groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled, um, October the eleventh. So we're getting very close to, um, groundbreaking, starting. Uh, we are working on a schedule currently. We expect, I would like to be open at the end of the year. That's very hopeful, but, um. I, I feel like it may, maybe after the first year. So that kind of give you a timeframe of what we're looking at.
Thank you so much. So, I mean, I've seen the Smash and Dash. Um, food truck, is that you guys as well? Just make sure. I mean, very unique, uh, burgers. I'm super excited. Um.
Good.
I've seen your menu. I haven't tried it yet. I haven't had a chance. I've just seen stuff online and it looks really, really good. So. We're just, uh, excited that you're wanting to invest and, um, putting up with the hoops and jumps of, uh, government and. It takes a, a certain person to be able to have. it takes a, a certain person to be able to have the perseverance to get through all these hoops, but, um, we just appreciate you having patience with us on this, so.
Sure.
We appreciate you.
Any council members?
What kind of things are on your menu?
What's that, I'm sorry?
What kind of things are on the menu?
Um, we do really specialty smash burgers, um, not just the regular, you know, lettuce, tomato kind of thing, uh, we do, uh, just special sauces, all different kinds of things on it. We use, actually, our meat comes from Horner's, all, obviously, a local butcher block from around here, use fresh, you know, never frozen beef, that kind of thing. We also do gourmet kind of grilled cheeses as well, so, just a little extra spice to things, so just something different.
He skipped over the important one, that we have a doughnut hamburger, smash burger, that everybody is, you know, thrilled about that, so, that's one of the angles that we tried to take on something that was normal, that people were familiar with, but then add a twist to it, which we intend on implementing here, um, not only are we going to have the go-kart track, but we're also going to have duck pen bowling, and, um, a sports simulator, some small arcade games, pool table, so, we do want to keep it more family-friendly, so we don't anticipate being in a nightclub, you know, I know that we are asking for, you know, a liquor license here, but as far as, um, that goes, I want to make that clear, that it still wants to be a family atmosphere, so.
Absolutely.
We will have outside dining as well.
And just want to continue to add through the years, uh, you know, as things progress, of course.
Yes, we need family-friendly stuff, so I appreciate you guys stepping up to the plate.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, not as family, family, friendly, but, you know, places that businesses can do meetings and, um, team building, uh, type activities as well, those are things I hopefully foresee being used for, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Any council members with more discussion or questions? Councilmember Brunner?
How many days do you hope to be open? Are you five days, six days, seven days a week?
Probably seven days a week, seven days a week, sir.
Great.
Most likely, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other council members? Any other questions for the mayor? Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate you coming tonight. If we don't have any other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass resolution fourteen twenty-two-five.
Second.
I have a motion to pass resolution fourteen twenty-two-five by Councilman Cal Gill, a second by Councilman Brunner. Any other discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Klein?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Cal Gill?
Aye.
McKinley?
Yes, resolution fourteen dash twenty-two-five has passed, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and just the two remaining announcements that passed from last meeting, Amplify Marion the Big Music Festival, October eighteenth and nineteenth, just want people to put that on their calendars, support that. And the last and final citywide cleanup of the year is District Six, Councilman David Kane's district, South Side of Marion, on September twentieth, that's this coming Saturday, so if you're not sure what district you're in, um, we'll get ahold of Councilman Kane, he'll tell you if they're, you're in their district or not. Do you know the boundaries?
It's alr, it's already clean.
Okay, District Six clean, um, and I will use this time to remind everyone that you can actually see the war district map on the city website, if you go to the city council page of the website, and at the very bottom, there's a PDF you can download, and you can zoom in, and it's high-definition, you can drill down to your, your street, and you, it'll color-code tell you which district you, you live in, so, encourage you just to know what district you live in anyway, so if you need something from your council member, you know who to contact, but if you're just not sure, um, just reach out to any of the council members. Uh, Mayor, go ahead.
Just really quick, I wanted to, this is, um, District Six is Indiana Westland's district, and they're, I'm very excited they're going to be partnering with us, they're going to bring over two hundred students to help and walk and clean all of District Six, so it's going to be a big deal for us.
So what you're saying is, it's not already clean, Councilman Kane?
Probably just my street's dirty, I don't know.
Well, that's great, thank you, Mayor, for sharing that, and, uh, that's super exciting, and, um, we're looking forward to filling up all those dumpsters, and as a reminder, again, anyone that lives in the city can drop things off now at the city maintenance building off of State Road eighteen, between nine AM and two PM, you just got to show your ID, uh, with your address in the city limits, so if you got more junk at your house, or in the basement, or in your yard, or if you see, I'm going to say this again, if you see a neighbor that has a lot of junk, respectfully ask them, would you like some help with that, because you never know, they may not have the means and ability to get that stuff out to the curb, or out to the city maintenance building, or may not have a truck, so, uh, help your neighbors, ask them, if you see something, ask, but just be respectful about it, because it, you may think it's junk, and it might be their treasure, you never know, so. Any other announcements by council members? Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kane, second by Councilman Klein, any discussion? Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Kane?
Aye.
Fordice?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.[1645.81]